Go ahead and start the city council meeting. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Bolton.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Mozzio. Alderman Kirkwood.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Turner. Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Hayes.
Present.
Mayor Taylor.
Present.
Do you have a quorum, ma'am?
Thank you. Tonight, we're going to have the invocation by the Reverend Barbara Brown, who is new to the AME Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please come up and welcome to Waukegan. We're going to have you go to the microphone.
Good evening.
Evening.
It is my pleasure to introduce myself. My name is Pastor Barbara Brown, and I represent the greatest church on this side of heaven by the name of Trinity AME Church. We just opened our doors for last Sunday, and we extend an invitation to you. A worship service starts at 11 o'clock a.m., so you are invited to come on over. I am here to do the invocation tonight, and I count it all joy. It is my pleasure to be here. So thank you for the invitation. You want to go to the throne with me? Let's bow our heads. Amen? God, we thank you for this glorious day, one that we haven't seen before. But, God, we thank you for opening our eyes and giving us a breath of life. God, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here tonight. We thank you for the opportunity to gather and make decisions about the community, to make decisions about the children, and just to make decisions that will thrust us into the environment where we enrich, enrich the things that we do. We thank you for the mayor. We thank you for the aldermen. And, God, we're asking that you continue to bless them. But, God, put a hedge of protection around our children as they go to and from school, as they travel, God. We're asking, God, that they face no hurt, harm, or danger. We ask you, God, to put a hedge of protection around our aldermen, around the mayor, that the decisions that they make for us will be pleasing in your sight, God. We ask that the words of their mouth and the meditations of their heart be pleasing to your sight. We ask, God, that you continue to protect the families that are represented in the communities, God, that you give them what they need to flourish and just be positive in the community. God, we're just asking for your blessings, God, that we continue to make the right decisions for our constituents, for the people that we represent, God, and that, God, for those who do not know you and the pardons of their sins, that when the invitation comes to have a relationship with you, that they will open their arms and invite you in. So, God, be in the midst of this meeting. Stay right here. Rest, rule, and abide. Give them the words to say. Give them the courage to say it. Give them the wisdom to do it. This is my prayer, and I ask, in the name of Jesus, may we all seal it with an amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to start by wishing everybody a good evening and thank you for being here, whether you're watching at home or whether you're here at council. Supposedly, this is our second spring meeting. Doesn't quite feel like spring yet, but, hey, we're close. Since it is officially spring, it means the budget season's in session. At the next city council meeting on April 18th, we'll go into more depth about the budget for the fiscal year 2022 and 2023. Last year, I presented a balanced budget that did not increase property taxes, and this year, I'm proud to say that our team has once again put a budget without property tax increases. I'm acutely aware of the challenging financial times that we live in. It seems like everything's going up, whether it be gas, groceries, much-needed services. As a city, we're doing our best to find new and innovative ways to increase government efficiency. So I'm looking forward to having budget discussions. Not only is it a balanced budget, but we're going to be investing in our city, both by improvements and by personnel. This budget will include over $50 million for neighborhood street and roadway projects, bridge and culvert repairs, upgrades to the water filtration plant and its miles of water mains, and the rehabilitation of the city's aging storm and sanitary sewers. Doesn't sound romantic, but it needs to be done. With one full-time city engineer and professional now staff on board, we will address our infrastructure needs by pursuing an ambitious and necessary improvement plans. This budget also puts forward the inclusion of a city administrator to assist staff in meeting with the long-term goals and policies of this administration, which will strengthen the stability and uniformity of this government. Waukegan needs this position, and our hard-working taxpayers deserve to have a long-term, stable, and consistent administrator. This position ensures that no matter who is in the mayor's office, or on the city council for that matter, the city of Waukegan will always be on the path to delivering an equitable growth and prosperity throughout the nine wards. By adding this position, Waukegan will also join the vast majority of major municipalities leveraging the know-how of an administrator to ensure that the city's best interests and those of its residents are always served. The budget also will bolster public safety by adding six new firefighters, paramedics, six police officers, five police auxiliaries, and a third deputy chief to the administration to the police department. In addition, we are strengthening the Department of Public Works and Engineering with a senior civil engineer and a civil engineer, a GIS analyst, and five laborers. Building, planning, and economic development will recognize strong support with the addition of a licensed zoning officers, two additional planners, a technician for the IT department. Also included is an HR generalist to assist in serving the city's recruitment and training needs. So, like I said, we will be discussing that next Monday. That'll come up for vote. We will have a meeting about that first, but I wanted to inform the public what you can expect to see in that budget. There's a lot, but there's a lot of needs in this city. Some general comments. For those of you who don't know, April is Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month. Throughout the year, especially this month, the city encourages everyone to play a role in making our community a better place for our children and our families. This is particularly important when we talk about gun violence in our community. Please, let's make sure our children and our neighborhoods are protected so our children can be out in the streets playing without fear of being shot. In addition, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services and their strategic partners developed a prevention resource guide, which provides information about protective factors and highlights examples of innovative prevention approaches being implemented by communities across the country. So if you have questions about that, please visit childwelfare.gov for more details. April is also Autism Acceptance Month. As the prevalence of autism in the United States has grown from one in 125 children in 2010 to one in 59 children in 2020, there's been a shift in autism awareness to autism acceptance. This shift promotes changes through improved opportunities in education, employment, accessibility, through housing, healthcare, and comprehensive long-term services. The city encourages everyone to work toward acceptance, creating connections to empower individuals in the autistic community to live a full life. You can find out more about that through autismsociety.org. Tomorrow night, there is a program from the Ant Mount Foundation called Stop the School-to-Prison Pipeline. It is from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and you can join and watch on wbo.live. You can pick that up, and I highly encourage people to do that. There will be a ward meeting for the first, second, and fourth wards on Thursday, April 14th, here on Genesee Street at the Boys and Girls Club. That will be at 5:30 in the evening. The College of Lake County is hosting an open house on Saturday, April 9th, so it's this Saturday, from 10:00 to 1:00, at all campuses in Lake County, including the Lakeshore Campus downtown. I recently had the opportunity to tour the campus with many of my staff members, and the innovations are tremendous. Please take the opportunity to see CLC and everything it has to offer, and you can register at clcillinois.edu. One of my favorite weeks is in full swing, and it's Lake County Restaurant Week. Waukegan restaurants participating include Isabella Chicago Red Hots, Club Tiki, Honey Bay's Barbecue, and Greentown Tavern. Please support as many of the local restaurants as you can. We need our economy to keep going here in Waukegan. You can find all the restaurants that are on that list at visitlakecounty.org. So if you happen to see me, please come up and talk to me when we're in the restaurant. Earth Week is coming up, and many of you have seen all the brochures that we've been putting out. Each one of the aldermen has put one out, and then we have a list of all the different things that we're doing for Earth Week. It involves the city, the park district, the harbor, and Waukegan Main Street. They all have different cleanups. Check out our city's calendar and website at waukeganiel.gov for all the information. Please, our city needs to be cleaned up. Do your part. If nothing else, can you at least clean up around your homes? Let's make sure that we're making our environment and our city beautiful. City stickers are going to be enforced this year, so make sure you take the time during this month to get yours before they go off. Early bird is over. We're now at, I believe it's $45, and then after this month, May 1st, they go up to $90 apiece. The easiest and least stressful way to get your city sticker is online on our website. You may also get your city stickers, and there's been many people doing it this way, by standing in line at City Hall during our normal business hours or at several currency locations throughout the city. Water shut-offs start this next week. I will once again say, if you are in need of help with your water, please talk to our water department. We have many places that we can refer you to for help. We have put that information out. Out of the hundreds of families who have not paid their bill, only 11 people have asked for help. So we're asking you, if you need that help, come and talk to us, but we will be starting after two years to do shut-offs. As you know, I'm committed to people being aware of what goes on in this city, and we have started an e-newsletter. It's called e-news@waukeganiel.gov. Please, put your email in there. We'll be more than happy. You'll get a monthly thing of everything going on in our city, all the highlights, some of the things that you'll miss between city council meetings. So please, take advantage of it. Last, but not least, last Friday was the first night of Ramadan. I know the aldermen and the city staff all join me in wishing you blessings during the holy month, and that's all I have. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You have two proclamations tonight. The first one is the National CDBG Program Week proclamation, whereas the week of April 11th through the 15th, 2022, has been designated as National Community Development Week to celebrate the Community Development Block Grant Program, and whereas the CDBG program provides annual funding and flexibility to local communities to provide decent, safe, and affordable housing, a suitable living environment, and economic opportunities to low- and moderate-income people. And whereas, over the past three years, our community has received a total of $2,451,414 in CDBG funds and $1,047,315 in CDBG-CV funds has funded a variety of projects that have directly benefited our residents and neighborhoods. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Waukegan designates the week of April 11th through the 15th, 2022, as National Community Development Week in support of this valuable program that has made tremendous contributions to the viability of the housing stock, infrastructure, public services, and the economic well-being of our community. Be it further resolved that our community urges Congress and the Biden administration to recognize the outstanding work being done locally and nationally with CDBG by supporting increased funding for the program in fiscal year 2023. The second proclamation is April is Fair Housing Month, whereas April 11th, 2022, will mark the 54th anniversary of the passage of the U.S. Fair Housing Law, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 as amended, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, religion, sex, familial status, handicap, and national origin, and encourages fair housing opportunities for all citizens. And whereas, on this anniversary, we honor the pioneers who bravely worked to challenge and overcome housing discrimination. And whereas, individuals in the state of Illinois have the right to choose where to live without discrimination based on race, color, religion, age, sex, familial status, marital status, national origin, ancestry, disability, sexual orientation, gender identity, military status, unfavorable military discharge, and order protection status. And whereas, the National Association of Realtors Code of Ethics commits all realtors to providing equal professional services without discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, familial status, handicap, sexual orientation, gender identity, and national origin. And whereas, acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunity are repugnant to a common sense of decency and fairness. And whereas, the city of Waukegan welcomes the opportunity to reaffirm our commitment to the principle of fair housing for all and is committed to all efforts that address discrimination in our community, support all programs that will educate the public concerning their rights to equal housing opportunity, and to assure every person their right to live free of the fear of housing discrimination for the next 50 years and beyond. And now therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Taylor and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby proclaim April 2022 is Fair Housing Month in Waukegan. And be it further resolved that a suitably embossed copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and the city clerk, be presented at the city council meeting on the fourth day of April 2022. Those are the two proclamations, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Sorry, thank you, Madam Clerk. Audience time.
Okay, audience time. Thank you. We have three minutes. And the first one we'll have is Ms. Dawn Johnson. Ms. Dawn Johnson also had a leaflet that I put down at each person's area. It's the yellow and pictures. So go ahead, Ms. Dawn. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Dawn Johnson, and I am a resident of Waukegan. I am here to speak on, the last time I was here, the 21st of March, regarding an issue that took place regarding the noise ordinance. It is in Section 1134. You all have the information. When I came here, I addressed Mr. Keith Turner in that area, having very loud music, revving up his engine, and we was coming from church. My concern is just not his car. It was other cars that was in that area. I understand, Mr. Keith Turner, you'd like to speak to me after this here because you explained that that's not you. But I have to be honest with you. You know I lived in your area for seven-plus years, and I know you very well. So when I did address it, I did see the camera, and if you notice, that car is there. And I will say that is you. But I'm not here. We're not here to go back and forth with each other. We're here to respect the residents in that area, as well as the children. So what I would ask is that you look at that information because you explained that it wasn't you. And you explained that I was lying, I guess, because you said I needed to get over it. I would like to ask that you publicly apologize to me because I will not get over it, only because it was you. But if you want me to follow the law and you want the community to follow the law, you have to follow it also. So all I'm asking is that everyone understand that it is a noise ordinance, and it's very loud. And if your car is loud in a certain area, you can be fined. So today, I'm just asking you, Mr. Keith Turner, if you will be a leader in our community and apologize. If you're not able to apologize, then I'll return back with witnesses, as well as other information that will support that this was you on March 20th, approximately 11:31, Lake Street, driving your car in that area. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Margaret Carrasco?
Good evening. On April 1st, just four days ago, Vice President Kamala Harris and Administrator Isabel Garcia Guzman, head of the U.S. Small Business Administration, SBA, prioritized their equitable access to capital for low-income borrowers and underserved communities in Waukegan. Specifically, the SBA now has a pilot program in the amount of $32.5 million specifically for small, underserved, woman-owned entrepreneurs, and extending it to 2024 or until the funds are exhausted. So I just thought, you know what? Throw it out there. Let's just see. How many women, not in Waukegan businesses, would like to open a new business in Waukegan? I think it's a golden opportunity. I had 100 women respond. Therefore, tonight, I would like to invite people to meet me in Paris, Waukegan. That's what I'm going to call it. It's going to be a woman business summit and fashion show in which 100 women, women of all ages, women of all colors, women of all body types, will be modeling expensive designer dresses. In addition to that, it's not only going to be just a fashion show, but it's going to showcase those 100 businesswomen owners who want to do business here in Waukegan. In addition to that, we're going to have present onsite in Spanish and English SBA representatives with certification and government contracting information, how to access resources, exporting, accessing loans. And as we know, securing financial capital is the number-one obstacle for women-owned businesses. And it's even more challenging for businesses owned by women of color due to historical inequities. With women being under-invested, did you know that only 2% of women receive funding through the SBA compared to men? You know what? It's time, and it's going to happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Carrasco. Mr. Clyde McLemore. And in fact, Mr. Clyde McLemore had another sheet that he wanted the alderman to take a look at. Those are at your desk as well.
Good evening, council members and mayor. Last council meeting, Mayor, you made an announcement that you would bring in a consulting firm to oversee the Waukegan Police Department. And this council voted to approve $60,000 to that firm. Since you, Mayor Taylor, been mayor, you have been spending taxpayers' money a whole lot. Mr. O'Connor stated his firm would do it for free. Then in 2016, which I gave each one of y'all one of these, we brought in the DOJ, and they did a federal overhaul and gave us a mitigation agreement. Points of that agreement were signed right here in this city chambers. And each one of you all got one. This was done for free. Now you want to bring in a firm that specializes in testifying for police misconduct. This company has testified all over the country in shootings in favor of the police. Now you wonder, how I know this? Perhaps I should remind you, I am the executive director for Black Lives Matter, and I consult with chapters all over the country. This city doesn't need these Trump-like firms overseeing or suggesting anything to the Waukegan Police Department. The bad part is a couple of you aldermen sat there in 2016, watched this agreement being signed, and you still voted to waste the citizens' taxpayers' money. Bad enough, the city is paying all settlements of these lawsuits that the city has received. Mayor, we know you paying your campaign manager, Brad Goodman, $9,000 a month. That's $108,000 a year. You giving Lisa Mayer a job, which I looked up the qualifications. She's not qualified for. This is all called political payback, and it is dividing our community. I have a question for you. Are you allowing candidates to solicit donations for their campaign on the city official emails? I received an email asking for donation. I was wondering, have any city employee received the same email on the city Waukegan official email? Is this the standard practice? What would happen if a city employee did that and not an elected official?
Thank you, Mr. McLemore. Mr. Rayon Edwards?
Good evening, mayor, city council, community. Haven't been here in a while, and I seem to get in here, and I see nothing has changed. Nothing. I guess ain't nobody been paying attention in the community of what's really been going on because we still coming up here. We playing politics. This is all politics. We going to keep on fighting with each other while our people are hurting and dying. It makes no sense. Nobody wins like this, at all. And I'm saying this to everybody because everybody need to start paying attention. We talk about how much we are investing in the future. Well, our kids, them babies are our future, and they dying in the streets, and we sitting here fighting with each other. And we say to them babies not to fight. Well, it doesn't matter what we say to them when they're watching us do what we're telling them not to do, y'all. It don't make sense. Let's wake up. In a minute, we ain't going to have no city of Waukegan. That's what I'm saying. So I say tonight to this city council, we don't need no third police deputy chief. For what? We're putting more money into government and not enough into our community. The community is the people's. Let's take some of that money and invest it in these babies. They need a place to go. They need something to do. It's nothing. They are feeling the hurt of their parents. They watching their parents go through it. And so they are responding to it by taking matters into their own hands, y'all. I hope y'all ready because the summer fit to be rough. It's fit to be lit. I implore all of y'all sitting up here today,[1731.04] I implore all of y'all sitting up here today, pay attention to what you doing on this council. Because y'all whispering to each other, telling each other how to vote and stuff, that's not why we elected y'all up here. That's not what we do. And I say that to everybody, because people watches this. We see everything. The things that you think we don't know, we know. We're not fools, y'all. Okay? And so I'm saying to each one of you aldermen also, get involved with the school district. I don't want to hear, that's not my job, I didn't run for that. It is your job. That district is in your ward. So that's part of your job. What I'm saying tonight to y'all is this, stop this damn fighting. Let's sit down like some adults and act like we got a little bit of sense. Because right now, this city ain't going nowhere. Ain't nothing changing in this city. People being sent up here by other politicians. It's disgusting and it's sick. I hope every last one of y'all paid attention.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Thank you. Brother Blanks?
Brother Blanks, Black Abolition Movement for the Mind, first and foremost, no disrespect towards you all. There was a movie called Coda that just won an Oscar for the speech and hearing impaired. I may have mentioned this before one time last year, that when we come up here to speak in the best interest of those who may be hearing impaired, this podium, we don't want our backs turned to you all, but it's just as disrespectful to have it turned here where there may be somebody here that's hearing impaired, that may have missed that beautiful prayer that Pastor Brown prayed, or who may be watching from YouTube. So we asking that this here stay this way. That's just a request. And that's out of respect for everybody. It's not back turned to you guys, and it's not to the audience here. Why pull the trigger? You said that this is, mayor, you said that this is Child Abuse Awareness Month. It's also National Poetry Month, in the spirit of that. And as you mentioned, about the violence and the shooting that is taking place in the community. So I say, and I would say in a poem, "Why pull the trigger to kill your brother and sisters? Then go to jail." For a system that hold, makes the guns and say, "No bail. Let's stop the shooting of our own. It's dead wrong." However, mayor, I would also say, in the same sense of child abuse, as it is just as much of a violence in the community, what could also be more traumatizing and abusive than when we have one of our students who are traumatized for being wrongly arrested, falsely accused? I know this getting old, but it needs to be heard. That is child abuse. So I'm looking forward to when you all say that you're going to do, mayor, you stated that you're going to do a nationwide search for a new chief. I'm in for that. Because right now, we gave this guy his chance. And then as this man said right here last week, what's your name, sir?
Vernon Stewart.
We need to know who the Civil Service Commission is, and we need to make sure it's a Civil Service Commission that has some bite to it. I think it was a good proposal that he put forward, and I think it's worth taking a look at, because the community needs to know who the Civil Service Commission is, and what their responsibilities are, and what the job is. So let's move forward on that. And last but not least, I think I pretty much covered everything here. So in the best interest of Child Abuse Awareness Month and poetry, we definitely want to make sure that our students are protected when they're at school, and that they are not snatched out, because that is one of the worst forms of child abuse and trauma. So just as we looking at the violence on the street, that is a form of abuse and trauma as well. So there has to be some accountability on both ends. When we asking the people to stop the violence in the street, we cannot have it coming from our police department. Thank you.
Thank you, Brother Blanks. Mayor, that concludes the audience time. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I know there's a lot of pressure to get this meeting over with tonight, because I know the basketball games are on. I get it. But let's go to consent agenda. Can I have a motion to do the consent agenda?
No motion.
Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Newsom. Any questions to the consent agenda? Yes.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear anything. What's going on?
He's pulling out items A and F under the consent agenda. Okay. Item B, motion to approve vendor payments dated April 4th, 2022, in the total amount of $1,528,562.2. Item C, motion to approve regular payroll dated March 25th, 2022, in the total amount of $1,627,832.94. Item D, motion to approve miscellaneous payroll, PD holiday payback, comp time, local 150 tool allowance, and retro pay dated March 25th, 2022, in the total amount of $38,776.97. Item E, motion to approve miscellaneous payroll, ERI final payment dated March 11th, 2022, in the total amount of $5,448.61. Any questions to those motions? Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item A, Alderman Turner, did you have some questions?
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much. You know, I just wanted to pull this one out to illustrate a couple of points here. This was approval of the meeting minutes from March 21st. And when I reviewed the minutes, firstly, I would just comment that they're not very descriptive or accurate. There were several people who spoke at audience time, and effort was made to capture, I guess, what they were trying to say, but it's not very clear. But my particular concern is that we made effort to capture comments made by the audience, but then, you recall when I, we talked about the dead tree ordinance, or dead tree nuisance being a nuisance ordinance? And there was discussion and several comments I made relating to the constitutionality of warrant with searches and seizures and so. But the only note related to that discussion was, after discussion regarding the amendments that need to be looked into regarding this ordinance, the item was held over by Alderman Turner. So if the audience were to look back at this, you know, our constituents are looking back at the meeting minutes, they would say, well, what was Turner, what was his objection to? Why do you hold, there's no detail. That's my point. So I just offered that as an illustration. I would like to see better meeting minutes being kept. And we don't have to discuss it. That's the comment I wanted to make for everyone's awareness. Thank you.
Can I have a motion for?
A motion.
Okay, Alderman Rivera, second. Alderman Kirkwood. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
No.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item F, Alderman Turner.
Thank you, ma'am. Once again, we have the motion to approve all raffle applications. That's a very vague, broad, all-encompassing statement. There were actually two raffle applications that are up for approval. And once again, we just talked about this three meetings ago, where the application includes the requirement or request, if there's a fiduciary bond has been issued. When last we talked about it, we're going to remove that from the application, because it's never, we never require a fiduciary bond. And the applicant always puts two words, waiver request. No detail why we need a waiver, we request nothing. And we just approve these things pro forma. And I just want to remind all of my colleagues here that, you know, we have a legal and fiduciary responsibility to the city of Waukegan and to our citizens, and to continue to approve applications that are improperly formed. And to then take a position on making changes that are not implemented. And then when those changes are not implemented, the form, the application comes back to us unchanged, and still to approve it, it's just wrong, it's something that I cannot do. I would like to ask, mayor, that you direct whichever staff, department, or individual who is responsible for making changes to our documents, that they specifically make that change, as we previously discussed, and bring it to your attention for approval. We should not have these applications, and that's what we agreed to previously, that this reference to requirement or option for a fiduciary bond be removed from the application. I would like that to ensure that that is removed, so it doesn't come back before the council again. And I would like to ask that you ensure that that happens.
Any other questions to the motion? Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
I don't believe I have a first and a second on that.
I'll first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we did. Okay, Alderman Rivera, second. Alderman Hayes. Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
No.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There being no reports or communications, or old business, we'll go to new business.
In Alderman Moiseo's absence, can I recommend?
That's what I was going to ask, if anybody wanted to do that. Okay, a motion for Aldibus. Alderman Florian, a second.
I will.
Okay, Alderman Rivera. Okay, any questions to any of the motions? No?
Okay, no questions. Thank you.
Okay. Item A, a motion to adopt an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of property located on Indiana Avenue by the City of Waukegan to Helmer Herrera. The matter was presented to the Community Development Committee on April 4th, 2022. Item B, a motion to approve a resolution accepting a grant from the Illinois Housing Development Authority's Strong Communities Program. This matter was presented in the Community Development Committee on April 4th, 2022. Item C, consideration of zoning calendar number 2660, an amendment to the conditional use permit for 3370 Brook Avenue to remove the condition requiring units to be owner-occupied. This matter was presented in the Community Development Committee on April 4th, 2022. Item D, a motion authorizing the proper city officials to settle fire department workman's compensation claim 211206W028 for a total amount not to exceed $36,266.16. This matter was presented to the Government Operations and Oversight Committee at the regular meeting held on April 4th, 2022. Item E, motion authorizing the proper city officials to settle fire department workman's compensation claim 20111W012 for a total amount not to exceed $43,586.50. This matter was presented to the Government Operations Oversight Committee at the regular meeting held on April 4th, 2022. Item F, motion authorizing the proper city officials to settle police department workman's comp claim 210805W009 for a total amount not to exceed $23,363.12. This matter was presented to the Government Operations and Oversight Committee at the regular meeting held on April 4th, 2022. Item G, motion authorizing the proper city officials to settle fire department workman's compensation claim 211228W022 and 190923W010 for a total amount not to exceed $55,961.65. This matter was presented to the Government Operations and Oversight Committee at the regular meeting held on April 4th, 2022. Roll, any other questions? Okay, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There being no ordinances, closing time, Alderman time.
Alderman Bolton.
All right, all right. Okay. We finally having a meeting in our ward, and as you all will see, these flyers, we're combining First, Second, and Fourth Ward. It will be at the Boys and Girls Club. I will put the flyers out on the table out there, as well as I will be going door-to-door. We will put it out on social media, excuse me. And once again, the First, Second, and Fourth Ward, the Boys and Girls Club, at 724 South Genesee. Come and fellowship, let's get together, let's problem solve, let's address issues, let's celebrate each other and support one another. Also, in the First Ward, we have, I believe it's April 18th, located at Adams and Eighth Street, we will have a dumpster. There will be flyers, it's called Earth Week. Am I right, Alderman Florian? We're collaborating, we're trying to show collaboration up here and working together. So we will be putting a dumpster out, as well as will be dumpsters in each ward. But the first dumpster will be on April 18th, located at Eighth and Adams, between the times 8:00 and 3:00 p.m. And also, I want to congratulate our mayor, you all don't know. She was one of the top 10 women in the state of Illinois to receive an award for being a great woman. I applaud her, okay. And then secondly, that's right, give it to her, come on now. We may not always agree with each other, but you know, we are still should respect one another, all right? Also, I want to acknowledge Mary Cunningham for receiving the Women's Hero Award as well. We applaud her. Also, yeah, give it to her, come on. That's right. And if you notice on the agenda, you know, we talk about community improvement. The CBDG is receiving grants to improve Waukegan. So there's monies out there, but when things are announced, we want you as the city council to make sure you're paying attention to that as well. There's grants, there's monies, to be there in place to support and help you. Also, our announcements for the ward meeting is also is in Spanish. The tengo un día, have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Seager.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody for being here tonight. I'd love to see more residents come on down. We want your negative, positive, whatever views you have. That's why we put these three ward meetings together, to get your viewpoint. And we'll be serving refreshments. So if you live in the First Ward, the Second Ward, Fourth Ward, come on down to the Boys and Girls Club at 724 South Genesee Street. Years ago, that was YMCA, wasn't it? And we'll have plenty of food. And thank you very much, and be safe, and all have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Kirkwood.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And just to reiterate, the three wards are going to be working together on April 14th. We encourage everyone to come out, whether you're in the First, Second, or Fourth Ward, you know, come out and get some good information. Also, to reiterate, Earth Day for the Fourth Ward, that will be on April the 19th. And that dumpster will be at Genesee and Julian from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. So anywhere in the ward, you can come and drop off those items that are permissible. Remember, no yard waste, liquids, tree trunks, concrete, brick, stone, rocks, hazards, waste materials, flammable materials, no car parts, paint, stain, lacquers, or railroad ties are permitted in the dumpster. Also, mayor, I thank you for the opportunity to talk about the Hawthorne Strategies last week, but I'm still concerned about getting a detail of the billing and how the city has prospered. I did hear how we've prospered for one, but to be paying some group $9,000 a month for helping the city image, I want to make sure that I get a detail on what has been done and how the city has benefited from this group. Also, we talk about autism awareness is this month, you know, wear blue. Also, we're going to be doing, having meetings regarding the ward remapping. I would like to see overlays on what the current map is and what the proposed mapping is, so that we can see the changes on those meetings that are conducting this week. Also, those aldermen that would like to get the Stop It, Don't Drop It signs, you know, please get in touch with me. Also, those Aldermen that would like to get the Stop It, Don't Drop It signs, you know, please get in touch with me. I think it coincides with Earth Week, trying to keep our community clean. Also, for the Fourth Ward, I will be contacting all the Neighborhood Watch program captains. We'll be meeting and talking about getting those meetings started on a regular basis. Also, I'd like to find out about YCC, when we're gonna be starting that program, cleaning the alleys out so that the Aldermen can get in their alleys. That was a good program last year. We want to continue to do that. Also, to encourage all residents, they're gonna have block parties, get them in 30 days in advance. Want to encourage all the residents to be involved in that, to get to know your neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Newsom.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Just in recognition for the Fifth Ward with Earth Week, the dumpster will be in the Fifth Ward at Grand Avenue and Yeoman Street from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and it's gonna be Wednesday, April the 20th. And I, there was information that went out that they will be doing some work on Grand Avenue. Is that
Yes.
starting? So there will be some construction from Green Bay or 41 on Grand Avenue. It's Green Bay. Okay, Green Bay, all the way to Sheridan on Grand Avenue, and I think that program is gonna be going on till the end of the year. So exercise caution when you're going down Grand Avenue and delays. That dumpster will not be sitting right on Grand Avenue. It will be on Yeoman Street, so you will have access to that. And Alderman Kirkwood did mention the things that you cannot bring, but I wanted to mention what you can bring. You can bring electronics and old tires, but they must be off the rims. And if you have any questions about anything else that you may want to bring, not sure of, please give me a call. That's all I have.
Thank you. Alderman Turner.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Excuse me. Firstly, I saw this handout that Mrs. Johnson put out and heard your comments about me and my Laot car. I just want to point out to everyone, and I get, I'm telling you, I've heard it for years about me and this car. It's not my car. This is like a '66 Lincoln Continental four-door convertible. The guy that drives it, we do look alike, so I can see your, I get it, I'm sorry. It wasn't me, but I can understand how you made the mistake. We had the same head. He's a little heavier than I. Bald head. We wear the same goatee. We got the same long nose, and for years, people were saying, "Man, I saw you in that car." It's not my car. So, anyway. Mr. Rayon Edwards made comments about kids needing something to do after school, or just to keep them busy, I guess. And I just want to remind him, you know, that's what the Park District, that's their mission to provide recreational services, and there are any number of other organizations that have, you know, programs that people can get involved in. And I'd be glad to help him, you know, identify some of those that he thinks that people he knows might be interested in, including the Boys and Girls Club. In the Sixth Ward, my, I still haven't pinned the date for my quarterly ward meeting. I think it's gonna be April 13th in a Zoom meeting, but I may push it to the weekend and do an onsite meeting. I'll confirm that this week and get information out about it. Potholes in the Sixth Ward. Every day, I'm out in the ward, start early in the morning. I've been working my way from the northwest corner of my ward, which is over by Lewis and Sunset and Greenwood and like that. Working my way through the ward and identifying areas and then sending emails, communicating with Public Works Department where these potholes are, and I'm asking for entire sections or several blocks to be patched, right? But if you have areas that need to be patched, there's significant potholes, deteriorating curbs, or whatever you have, please contact me. You don't have to wait for me to find it or for me to get to it. But just bring it to my attention, and we'll get to it as quickly as we can. Public Works Department is doing a stellar job out there for all of us in all wards, and I want to thank them for that. Sixth Ward Dumpster Drop for Earth Day, Earth Week is gonna be on February, or March, April 20th, thank you. On April 20th at 741 West Glen Florida. That's in front of the Dollar General Store, 8:00 to 3:00 p.m. Same rules apply, same things you can drop off. This flyer that was provided to us, it's on the city's website, and it actually lists all of the dumpster sites and dates for every ward. I've already put it out on my Facebook page and continue to promote that. You can see it on the city website. Speeding cars. So over the wintertime, we didn't have quite the same level of plague in the speeding vehicles that we see in the summer, but the weather warms up, I'm starting to see these cars speeding again and get complaints from my neighbors. This is applicable not just on the main thoroughfares like Lewis and Sunset and North Avenue and Jackson, but even on the side streets. So you may recall, several times in the past, I've mentioned that I was trying to do a pilot project to put in speed humps, and that's coming. So the speed humps are in, and I'm just working on a, where am I gonna deploy them? The idea, and we haven't formed, we haven't finalized the where, we haven't finalized the how, but the, my vision is, my vision is to deploy a speed trailer, Chief Commander, and take statistics on where we're gonna place these, see what the traffic flow is, what the traffic patterns are, and then put the humps in and continue with that speed trailer to, you know, see the before and after with the speed humps and see how effective it is. Also, I'm gonna be taking a measure, a survey with whichever neighbors on the blocks or where these are deployed to see what their thoughts are and how their perceptions of their effectiveness is before I come back to the mayor and the council and say, "Hey, it's a good thing. I think we need to go citywide with this." But we do have an issue. We all know that, and this is one of the efforts that I'm taking to help identify a solution and mitigate the problem. And that'd be that. Sixth Ward. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Rivera. Thank you. Sorry, sir. It's Alderman Rivera's time. Thank you. Mr. Rivera?
You can ask him afterwards.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First of all, my condolences to all the families who have lost a loved one from the city of Waukegan. I want to thank everyone who participated in audience time and would ask to please continue to be respectful. Speeding has been brought up. It is an issue. And please, just be mindful when you're driving. When you leave tonight and you're driving, after just a minute, look down and see how fast you're going. It's something that occurs, and we don't even think about it, but we have to make a conscious effort of knowing what the speed limit is and what we are doing. So again, that's kind of my challenge when you're driving, especially through a neighborhood. That's 25 miles an hour. Take a look and see how fast you're going. Other than that, COVID-19 continues to be in the forefront, so please be careful and mindful when you're out in public. The Earth Week, the, I guess one of the, one of the outcomes that we want to see is the city get together, obviously have a clean city. But also, we're trying to make sure that opportunities are available for people to do the spring cleaning. We're advertising it. We're having two wards per day, except on Friday. On Friday, there's just one ward, which is the ninth. Now, you are able to, I mean, we're not gonna check IDs, so if you're not from the seventh ward, you know, I'm not gonna reject you. But we don't also want to inundate Tom if everyone forgot to go on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and all of a sudden, everyone shows up on Friday. So again, that's the reason that we're just trying to spread it out. One of the outcomes is to change behavior. We want people to think of this week and the future as, you know, "I'm cleaning up my household, my yard, my neighborhood. I'm keeping my city clean." So, so don't just think that you can not only do it at the time of your ward. Again, it's available throughout the city. Locations are posted. But I encourage everyone, take advantage of this. This'll be a good thing. People seeing others clean up is a good thing. Other than that, everyone have a good night, and God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you for highlighting that, Alderman Rivera, as well as everyone else who's participating with a dumpster in their ward during our Earth Week event. I also want to highlight, there's other opportunities for cleanup. Downtown, they're doing Saturday, April 16th from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00. I think that's a group that's usually headed by Main Street, and so that Saturday, they'll be focusing on the downtown. Washington Park is gonna be done on Friday, April 22nd, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. I believe that's an initiative through the Park District. There's a lakefront volunteer cleanup and dive. They actually clean the harbor. I hear that's kind of interesting to see what they find in the water, so those of you that are interested in that may want to join them on Saturday, April 23rd, from 8:00 to noon. And at the same time, well, from 9:00 to noon, there's gonna be a beach cleanup, so the lakefront will be approached from the harbor and the beach that day. And then there's also an Amstutz cleanup that day on April 23rd from 9:00 to 11:00. So after those events on that Saturday, the 23rd, we're going to have a lunch at Greentown on the Rocks for those that participate. So I think we're probably gonna end up doing some kind of wristband or something like that to identify those people who actually helped in the cleanup of the the lake, the beach, and the Amstutz that day. So hopefully, this will be, as Alderman Rivera said, not only an opportunity to change behavior, but for some community cohesion around a great event. So, and I'd like to thank all the Aldermen again for participating with the dumpsters, and I'm so excited because the Waukegan School District is putting this out on their website. So be prepared, people, because a lot of people are gonna know about this. So I think it's gonna be awesome that we have that collaboration with the school district, sending it out to their people. So, there's that. Mr. Blanks, I wanted to, Brother Blanks, I wanted to tell you, if you Google Waukegan Civil Service Commission, the whole thing comes up. They tell you who's on the board, what the qualifications are. Everything is right on the website. And if I can find it, almost anyone can, because I'm not that great at this stuff. But it is on there, so you can see the members, you can see their terms and everything. So it is accessible to the community. I want you to know that, and I believe- Well, I believe, am I right, Stu? Are their meetings public? Can people come to their meetings?
Yes, their meetings are, they're public, but they're not on a regular schedule. So, and that's, yeah, and I think that that's fair. I think that there's some advanced communication that can be done on that.
Okay, thank you. And then my last comment is on the budget. I know the mayor talked about it a little bit, and we haven't fully discussed it, and we have many. We'll have opportunity for the public to comment going forward here in a couple of weeks, but I'm very excited. The budget is balanced. I'm excited it's focused on increasing our staff in areas where we needed increase. I'm excited it's focusing on infrastructure, which is something we really need. I think the budget is a way of communicating our priorities, and I like those particular priorities of balanced budget, staff, infrastructure. And then I want to say a little bit about city manager. I know there's some controversy about it. I personally feel like this last election was a referendum on city manager because I feel like it was one of the things that definitely divided the previous mayor with the current mayor, and you see who we have as mayor. So I believe the citizens spoke, and I hear from my people all the time. One of the reasons I voted for this mayor was she was gonna bring a city manager. It's my time right now, Clyde. Thank you. She was going to bring a city manager, and I believe that we, as Aldermen, should support that initiative going forward. So that's my thing. Thank you very much.
Last but not least, Alderman Hayes.
Thank you very much. In the same vein, I actually just want to take my time to also speak to the city administrative role that's being proposed and included in the budget, and it's being proposed. I agree that the mayor ran on this issue. She was voted into office, and that is an indication that the city wants and needs a city administrator. Cost is an issue. Cost is always the issue. I'm happy to speak to that, but please keep in mind that the city is a business. There is revenue, and there are expenses. There are personnel, and we have a fiduciary obligation, as was raised earlier, to the people of the city of Waukegan, but also the employees. In order to run the business, you have to anchor it with experts. Right? We have a corporation counsel. We have very well-credentialed heads of our departments. We have a police chief. We hire people with an expertise. Whether you agree or disagree with their opinions, we hire people with an expertise to run these departments. A city administrator, similarly, is an expert. This is not just some individual. This is not a random job posting. This is somebody who has an advanced degree in municipal management. We are high-
Mr. McLemore. Okay.
I'm stating- I'm stating my opinion, and you're welcome to use your three minutes at the next meeting to state yours, and I will listen. I promise you that. And I'm happy to talk to you outside of this meeting. But if I could just continue, I think that the mayor's opening comments tonight speak volumes. What do we need in the city? We need consistency. We need continuity. We need stability. At the risk of being redundant, those three things are incredibly important, but perhaps most importantly, we need credibility. Comparatively speaking, most other municipalities of our size have a city administrator, and it's a non-issue. This is somebody who's brought in with an expertise to help manage the city, interface with department heads, and from administration to administration, carry on the fundamental principles. Everybody's vision for their administration differs, and I respect that. But there are certain obligations that we have. We want to reduce our debt. We want to improve the general welfare of the citizens of the city. We want to improve our roads. We want to enhance our economic vitality by fostering small businesses, all of the things that everybody comes up here and talks about. We want to have a better interface with the schools. That can change with the blink of an eye, from one mayor to the next. What you have is a full stop, and this is no disrespect to the department heads, because I know that you're very capable of carrying on, but what we have is a full stop from one mayor to the next. And then there is a ramp-up period, and it takes time. It wastes time. If we have somebody who is in place, a non-political individual, right? This person isn't voted in. They can be terminated, but they're, the city administrator that we're looking to hire is not looking at problems through the lens of politics. They're looking through the lens, they're looking through a lens of problem-solving, creating efficiencies for the city, making money for the city, and saving the city money. So yes, you're right. It's all about money, and this city administrator is gonna pay for himself or herself several times over, over the course of their time with the city. I promise you that, and if I'm wrong, hold my feet to the fire, by all means. But I'm here to make a case for the importance of having somebody in that role that can help us. The mayor can only be in one place at one time. She's doing a phenomenal job, but we need support. We need an individual to anchor the management of the city, along with the mayor, the city council, and the department heads. So clearly, I'm in favor of it. I encourage you to think about it. I encourage everybody to do your own homework, and based on that homework, based on that diligence, vote how you believe when the time comes. But it's an important issue for the city, and I encourage you to use your time to talk about it. But you know how I feel about it. I will speak about it again. In fact, I'll continue with my presentation at the next meeting, and I will do my best to try to convince you that we need it. So on that note, two other points. Water shut-offs. So, on that note, two other points, water shut-offs. They seem punitive, they are punitive. However, there's a whole host, a majority of the city that pays their water bill. So, it's actually punitive to the individuals that pay their water bills to have to continue to float those that don't. I'm sure there's extenuating circumstances, there's exceptions in every case. Nobody wants to have their water shut off, we don't want to shut off people's water, but the time has come, it's been years, we've had every warning and every notice that you can possibly give. If you know somebody who's not paying their water bill, if you know somebody who's having a hard time, have them reach out or encourage them to pay the bill. Lastly, I just want to say thank you to Alderman Rivera and Alderwoman Florian for all of your effort on Earth Week. As has already been said, the ninth ward is last but not least. Friday, April 22nd, 8:00 to 3:00, we're going to have a dumpster off Belvedere Road, over by the IHOP. If we do end up being the dumpster of last resort, that's okay, we'll take it. We will gladly take it, let's clean up the city, let's move it forward. Thank you.
That concludes the Alderman mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Again, before we adjourn, I just want to remind everybody that the evenings are lighter, our children are out playing in the streets, please watch your driving. This can be a matter of life and death for a child, an animal, or even another person just walking, so please, slow your speed. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Who made the first?
I did.
Okay, Alderman Turner and Alderman Rivera. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone, God bless.